Do we have Dylan there?
I'm here. And we have Caleb in person.
Who do you have in house? So you have myself, Bob and Jerry on Zoom. Do we, what board members do we have present?
Hey, Tom, this Caleb. I'm in the chamber. You can do it.
Dylan?
Hi, Tom. Caleb is here in person.
Oh, Caleb's there, okay. All right, so I got 6:30, we'll give him two more minutes. See if, for your Sinead or Russell will come. Okay.
Russell said he couldn't make it. I am in hurt for Sinead, though.
Okay. Okay. All right. Let me know, Rich. No, okay. Okay. Dylan, whenever you're ready, let me know.
We're all set.
Are you all set, Dylan?
We're all set.
Okay. Can I have your attention, please? Please. Good evening and welcome to the Lowell Planning Board for March 7th, 2022. The first matter on the agenda this evening, we have the minutes for approval for January 20th, 2022. Any board members have any comments or corrections for the January 20th minutes? If not, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second. And all in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Anybody else vote? We have, is Caleb there? He voting? Can't hear him. Okay. So those minutes are approved. And moving along on the agenda, we have the February 7th meeting. That meeting, it was only myself and Jerry. All the matters were continued to the next meeting. And Jerry did go over communications that he gave to us on the update of the Walk Bridge and for the completion date, 2028 to hopefully 2029. He gave us a detail on how hopefully that will be working. So Jerry and I were there, so I'll make a motion, we approve those. Is that satisfactory to you, Jerry?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So those minutes are approved as well. So tonight appears that we have two continuances. The first continuance request will be from Broadway Street. So this is site plan review and special permit, 773-735 Broadway Street. Boston Capital has applied to the Lowell Planning Board and Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals for site plan review, special permit and variance approval to redevelop the existing historic mill building at the above address. Into 53 affordable units. The project includes the redevelopment of the existing structure as well as the construction of an addition to include additional housing, a management office and parking. The subject property is located in the traditional multifamily zoning district. The project requires site plan review approval per Section 11.4 and special permit approval per Section 4.5 from the Lowell Planning Board. The project will also require variance approvals pursuant to Section 5.1, 5.2, 5.3 and Section 6.1 from the Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals and any other relief required under the Lowell Zoning Ordinance. The applicant has requested the matter be continued to April 4th. They've completed a peer review and they are working on the traffic plan and they're requesting the matter be continued to April 4th. That satisfactory to the board?
Sure. I'll make a motion and we continue to April 4th.
Okay, Mr. Malovich made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that matter is continued to April 4th. We have another matter, which was a pre-application hearing that was scheduled for this evening. And what happened was after the last two meetings, that all the matters had to be continued till tonight's meeting, I reached out to our senior planner and asked Fran if she could get ahold of Attorney Gary and ask him if he'd be okay putting the pre-application off at 3:21 due to the fact that we would have had five public hearings and we tried to reduce ours to only four. And he was in agreement to continue till 21st. I guess he had approved the continuance at my request through Fran. And I know Dylan was working on the agenda, so the agenda came up and not until after the fact that Attorney Gary get back to us, our communication back and forth, and it was agreed continued till March 21st at my request, so we wouldn't have a heavy agenda. Because we tried to keep the agenda a little lighter, not knowing that Broadway Street was gonna go and the other matters that are on tonight's agenda. So for the pre-application hearing for 190 and 198 Plain Street, Lowell Development LLC has applied for pre-application discussion of plans to redevelop the existing properties at the above address into two restaurants. The properties currently include a VFW Lodge and a parking area for the VFW Lodge. The applicant proposes to demolish the existing building at 190 Plain Street and construct a Popeyes Chicken Restaurant and construct a similar restaurant on the 198 Plain Street lot. The applicant has proposed a drive-through service for both restaurants. The subject property is located in the Regional Retail Zoning District. When the applicant files a full application for a public hearing, it will require a special permit approval per Article 12 and Section 11.3 to construct a drive-through serving restaurant and a site plan review approval under Section 11.4 for construction of a drive-through service. So I will make a motion that we continue this matter to 3:21 because that was at my request that we reached out to the applicant and asked him if he could continue it out so we wouldn't have a very lengthy meeting tonight and maybe not meet the time requirement of our meeting. So I'll make the motion to continue to 3:21.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Malovich is the second. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposition? Hearing none? That motion is approved. Okay. Back to the agenda. Without continuances at this point that we know of, we have a site plan review at 663 Lorman Street. Standish Green Group LLC has applied to the Lowell Planning Board for site plan review approval to operate an adult-use marijuana cultivation and product manufacturing facility at the above address. The subject property is located in the Light Industrial Zoning District. The proposal requires site plan review approval pursuant to Section 7.10 and Section 11.4 from the Lowell Planning Board and any other relief as requested by the Lowell Zoning Ordinance. May we hear the applicants, please, for the Lorman Street project?
Thank you. Phil Silverman here from the law firm of Vicente-Siederberg. Is it possible for me to do a screen share? We have a presentation.
Absolutely. Yes. We'd love the screen share. Thank you, sir.
Try that. All right. Is everybody able to see my screen where it says project summary?
Yes.
Yes.
Fantastic. All right, then. I'll start from here. So tonight, I'm joined here by members of the Martinetti family, Paul, Anthony and Tony and their sister Lena. They're the owners of the company. They're also longtime Lowell business owners. We also have Randy Myron here. He's our civil engineer. And before we jump into the details, I'm gonna give you just a little background sort of overview of the project. We're seeking to locate a marijuana establishment at 663 Lawrence Street. The company has engaged with the community. They hosted a community outreach meeting on March 4th of 2021, also held meetings with the South Lowell Neighborhood Group, who has also provided a letter of support in connection with the project. And we've also entered into a host agreement with the city. This project is somewhat familiar to you. We did have a pre-scoping application and hearing before you. And during that, there were several details regarding the project that you wanted further information on. I think, you know, some changes to the site plan, lighting and landscaping, waste disposal, odor mitigation. What, we've tried to respond to those inquiries with the filing that we made. We're gonna walk through a lot of that here tonight. Also, the Department of Planning and Development has responded to what we did file. They have some other, you know, concerns and conditions. Quite frankly, we haven't really had a lot of dispute with them. We're in agreement with everything they've wanted. Again, we'll get to all of that as well. So turning to the site itself, this is in the Light Industrial Zoning District, which is designated for adult-use cultivation and product manufacturing. We're in compliance with all the existing setback requirements. We've got 42 proposed parking spaces, which is in excess of the required amount of 25 under your zoning. There is a concern on the Department of Planning and Development regarding the dimensions of the parking spaces. Maybe that they want us to make them somewhat wider to comply with your zoning. That's not a problem. We might lose a space or two at this particular lot, which bring it down to, you know, 40 or 39, but as I said, all that's required here is 25. We're gonna have about 10 to 15 employees here. And so there's more than enough parking here. We're not concerned with that at all. I should also mention at this time, there was an additional proposed condition by the Department of Planning and Development that we get approval from the Lowell Stormwater Review Team prior to applying for a building permit to ensure compliance with stormwater management regulations. We're happy to have that as a condition as well. So just so you're familiar with the property again, this is sort of a bird's eye view of where the property is at 663 Lawrence Street. You can see the exterior conditions of the property. We're not intending to do a great deal as far as the exterior goes. I think there will be some lighting modifications we've proposed. We're gonna have a couple of lights up on the wall of the building at about 30 feet high. These are downcast. They will not spill over. We've given you a photometric plan along with the materials that show there'll be no light spill over onto budding properties, but it will provide the necessary lighting for this property. We've also proposed some landscaping modifications. I know that the Department of Planning and Development had inquired as to putting some shade trees in. I don't think it's a requirement of your zoning. We can look into that. There is a concern when you do that about security. You don't wanna give anybody of ill intent a place to hide. We're happy to talk about that, though. We have proposed doing some significant landscaping upgrades to make this an attractive project. And of course, there will be some security, you know, features improvements. There will be cameras all around the facility. I'll get into that a little bit more as we proceed further on the project. I think this was the lighting I mentioned, the photometric plan. The placement is on the building. That's where the light will come from. But these are dark sky compliant fixtures that we'll be using. This slide actually shows a lot of the landscaping. I'm moving my cursor about it here, just so you can get a sense. We are really trying to improve the appearance here by putting in additional landscaping. Next, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get to the interior. These are significant improvements that will be made to the interior. We've gotta put in multiple rooms for cultivation, product manufacturing. The building actually is ready for construction at this point. It's cleared out. Everything is ready to do that build out. This is, we're using floors three and four of this building. One and two will continue to have some tenants in them below, but three and four are where the primary option operations go on. And, you know, we'll get further into the plans later when the architect gets on board to do some construction drawings. But needless to say, I think you have probably seen these types of operations before in Lowell cultivation. There's multiple rooms where the product is grown, dried, harvested, packaged, very, all the similar, there are distinctions between every facility, but there are similarities between most of them. So you're probably somewhat familiar. The fourth floor, mostly offices, some secure storage. There is a significant space about, I think it's 10,000 square feet for possible future expansion, but we're not ready for that yet. We're gonna start relatively small on, you know, with most of our cultivation efforts on the third floor and proceed from there. Again, for cultivation and manufacturing, we've provided you some of our standard operating procedures so that you can have a sense of that. We can answer questions. Again, I know you've seen some of this. I think the important thing, you know, in terms of cultivation is that all of the environmental media, all of the soil, the cannabis, the products, they're going to be independently tested by an independent testing laboratory prior to sale to make sure that nothing we're selling has any types of contaminants in it. All of the edible products that we might produce are prepared and handled in compliance with good manufacturing practices, food. And we'll also be satisfying minimum energy efficiency and equipment standards that are established by the Cannabis Control Commission to reduce energy and water usage and mitigate environmental impacts. I know there was a concern on electricity when you held the pre-scoping meeting. And what we have learned since that inquiry is we're gonna need to bring in some additional power to the facility. But we are told, and we did get this opinion from Mr. Puccio at Electric, it shouldn't be any kind of a burden on the surrounding community and its power. It's just, you know, we're able to bring in sufficient energy and not burden the rest of the system. As far as security, again, without taking a lot of time, because I know you've seen this, this is all Standard Cannabis Control Commission. We have the cameras all around the exterior. We have a 360-degree view of around the facility, so we know everyone that's coming and going. We have cameras on every door, every window and in every room where marijuana is handled or stored. Perimeter alarms on doors and windows and also panic and arrest alarms throughout the facility. We have a seed-to-sale tracking system. You may be familiar with that. The moment a seed sprouts, it is tagged, barcoded, weighed. The weight goes into an inventory system and we're periodically, every couple of days or every week, weighing the plants over again and entering them so that if there's a plant that weighed two ounces last week and it only weighs an ounce this week, we know something's wrong. We go back to those videos. We keep those tapes for 90 days and we figure out what happened with that product. If it was diverted by an employee, put in their pocket or otherwise, they try to get away with that. That employee is terminated immediately. The Cannabis Control Commission has a no-tolerance policy for any kind of diversion. So that's here. There is a vault. It's a hardened vault where all of the finished product goes at the end of every day. It's not Fort Knox, but it also would take quite a bit of time to get through so that, you know, if somebody were to have some kind of a criminal intent here and came at night, they're gonna have a very hard time getting by the cameras that we have outdoors, but if they manage to get in a door, there's multiple doors to get through and then they get to this vault. By the time anybody would even start getting at that vault, the local authorities will have been notified and will be there. So, you know, as I'm sure you're aware, significant security here. We do have onsite security personnel during business hours and after business hours, the site is monitored off-site. It's 24/7 actually, not just business hours, but beyond. Deliveries, I think there was an inquiry about how that works. We have deliveries, remember, this is not, there's no retail sales here. So we're not purchasing wholesale from anybody. Most of the deliveries, you might see a delivery of some soil or some other, you know, nutrient, something of that nature. You won't see large trucks here. They would be coming on some kind of a, probably a Sprinter van. You might see some deliveries from us to other dispensaries, for example. Again, that would be in unmarked Sprinter vans and we'd have to abide by all of the CC regulations regarding transportation, which have a lot of protocols, but have been done very safely thus far. In terms of the amount of deliveries, I would be shocked if we had deliveries to us of more than once or twice a week going out. I'd be surprised if it was more than once, maybe twice a day. That's it. So there's not a lot of trucks going back and forth on this facility. Again, standard things that, you know, the CCC takes very seriously and we do too, just in terms of making sure that you understand. We will do everything we can to prevent diversion to minors. Nobody under 21 years of age will be working here. We do have a website, but we have warnings on that website that it's really only to be viewed by people 21 years of age or older. And we don't manufacture products that resemble a realistic or fictional human, the animal or fruit or cartoon character, anything of that nature. In terms of nuisance, again, we do have, you know, receptacles for non-marijuana waste in a dumpster that we keep locked. You should know, important to note, no onsite consumption at the site. We monitor the entire facilities. We will not allow employees to use it. We won't, obviously, this is not a public site where customers come in, but we wouldn't allow anybody in our parking lot to be using this site for any kind of use of marijuana. Odor mitigation, so the good news about odor mitigation is that the technology, which I think at the beginning of marijuana legalization 10 years ago, has come quite a long way. And most of it, sort of on the technological side, relates to the use of these carbon filtration systems, which essentially scrub the air of what are called terpenes. That's the part of the plant that causes the odor. And they take care of that. There are other features, though. It's important to, something as simple as having door closures, so that doors in the facility automatically close, it goes a long way. And we do quite a bit of training with employees on those types of issues, you know, not doing something stupid like propping a door open. You just can't be doing that. That's how you get odor issues. So we do, you know, the technology is good, but it's also a matter of training and some of the protocols that we use to make sure that that doesn't become an issue. And finally, just touch on benefits to the city of Lowell. We think we start with 10 to 15 employees, maybe get up to 20, you know, at some point, maybe after a year or two. Beyond that, we mentioned some expansion space. We'll see where that goes. We don't wanna get ahead of ourselves. We also are paying, as many of you may know, impact fees to the city under our host community agreement. I think those are 3% of gross revenues, so there is the potential for significant revenue. And we do like to believe that, you know, this type of a development does lead to economic development for the city. Employees that come in and are in the city and obviously spend their money nearby. So, you know, we think it has benefits for the city in a number of different ways. So that's our presentation and we're happy to take any kind of questions if you'd like at this time.
No, we defer questions till later. So what, if you have nobody else who would like to speak on behalf of the applicant, then I'd open up to the public first and then I'll turn it over to board members for comments, okay? Thank you, sir. Great. At this point in time, would anybody like to speak in favor of this project? Anybody in favor? In favor? As Mr. Silverman indicated, we did receive a letter of support from, that we have in our file, from Jeff Thomas. Indicated that he was gonna try to be here at one meeting, but they had their group neighborhood meeting that night. But he indicated that the group has been doing business and your group, the Magrini, is doing a business in the area for a long period of time. And they met with them and they, they had no concerns and they thought your presentation to them was well done. So we have that back in our files and our board members have seen that. So I'll start with that. So after that, if anybody in favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none? Anybody in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none? At this time, I'll turn it over to the board. I'm sorry. Okay. Go ahead. In opposition?
Yes.
You say your name and record for the address, for your record, please.
David Piscatelli, 685 Lawrence Street. I own the 50-unit mill that is directly adjacent to 663. There's probably, we share an access road. There's maybe 140 feet between the two buildings. There's 50 families living there. There's also, it's a pet-friendly building. The people, it is the city, as everybody knows, that people walk their dogs in the parking lot. So my biggest concerns is really three of them. It's odor mitigation, talk about the scrubbers, the technology, that they've come a long way, which means they didn't work in the past. What's the guarantee that they're gonna work in the future? Because I don't want my building to be empty because people are smelling marijuana byproducts or smoke or whatever it is that's gonna be coming out of there. The second is obviously security and safety. I know you're gonna have cameras. I know you're gonna probably have fences and all of this, but if the places like Fort Knox and the criminals show up, then there's a 100-car parking lot that all my tenants use. The next best thing is gonna be breaking into cars or stealing cars or whatever. And then, obviously, safety in the sense of, I know there was an explosion extracting oil in Pittsfield in February in a mill. Same exact situation, fire and an explosion. So I don't know if you're gonna be extracting oil. My guess is that you will be. And I don't know who polices that, who governs that? And what happens when the scrubbers don't work and there's, you know, the cars are getting broken into in the parking lot and people's safety and happiness are gone because of this?
Would you like me to address some of those or?
Sure, if you don't mind, sir. Thank you.
Not at all. So, look, the odor, I understand the question. My comment was that this is something that has been around for 10 years and there were problems 10 years ago. In specific facilities in Massachusetts, we've heard of problems, but they get fixed. This is not, because the technology is so good now, you know, you can deal with these problems. We understand the need here to make sure that the odor does not get out and, you know, have a negative impact on the neighborhood. We have to abide by that. We're well aware. As far as security, I would have to push back pretty hard on the notion that this will become something where people are going out and breaking in cars. The truth of the matter is, and I can be happy to show Mr. Piscatelli the studies, crime goes down around these facilities because the security is so good. Everybody understands that these cameras are all over and they are catching what's going on in your neighborhood. This is not an attractive site for crime and crime doesn't go up near these facilities. I think if you take a look at the other facilities in Massachusetts, you'll find that out. The communities are just not reporting crime problems around. They don't occur because it's not, it's not an attractive opportunity for crime. As far as safety, I don't know the specifics of Pittsfield. It's possible that what that was, the extraction method that causes problems is what's called butane. And if it's not done correctly, that, I do know that that causes explosions. We're not planning on doing that type of extraction. We're using what's called supercritical CO2 extraction. I don't know of any problems that have arisen, but I can assure you that that's part of the fire chief and the inspection process that the fire chief will go through before, you know, before issuing a certificate of occupancy. So that will all be resolved in terms of fire safety. They'll get to see all of the processes that we're gonna use. So I, again, don't really expect a problem in that regard either.
One more question. You talked about the security 24/7. Is that an onsite security guard or you're just like a monitor through the cameras? That is like a voice activated camera?
There's guards during business hours and after that, it's 24/7 is monitored.
Monitored meaning the cameras are monitored? Like there's?
Yes.
Motion detectors on the cameras?
Yep, there are.
I mean, that's, that's really.
And we're happy to work, we're happy to work with you in any way that you think, you know, makes some sense in terms of reassuring the new you know, makes some sense in terms of reassuring the nearby residents. We understand the concerns. This is something new. It may make some sense for us to sit down and meet with you before this gets going, so we can try to come up with mitigation.
My biggest concern is that is that this all goes forward, and then the problems arise, and I have nobody to voice my concerns to. And, you know, just a closed door, and and I get nothing. And 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 the investment that I made and and all the work that I put into that building goes away.
It's which is perfectly reasonable. I would note to you that the Martin Eddie family actually has an office right around the corner. So they're not they're not gonna be hard for you to find if there are issues.
No, I I know them personally.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak in opposition? Anybody else? Anybody else? Okay, at this point in time, I'll turn it over to the board members if they have any questions.
Mr. Chairman, by May?
Yeah, Mr. Fisher? Yes.
If we could bring up the the applicant could bring up the site plan, please, so we can see kind of really the 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 comment about the access of the parking. I know DPD had commented about that, and I just want to have a better understanding on the of that issue.
All right, let's see if we can.
Maybe it's actually, Mr. Silverman, if the the I think it's item 19 from the EPD memo. It says, per the proposed site plan, the applicant is proposing to gate off and discontinue an existing right-of-way, which is used to access abutting parking areas, existing right-of-way over 663.
Sure.
Lawrence Street is currently the only access point in these parkings. So that's that's really what I want.
So, okay, look, I'll I'll and I was talking to my client. We want to try to understand the comment. If you can see my cursor, I think I think that accessway is over here towards the lower left of the site. And it's my understanding that before my clients bought this a couple of years ago, this was completely blocked off. There were stones rolled in front. It was grown over. And my client cleaned it up, and actually, I think it was at the request of the abutting residents, asked us to put the gate there because they were concerned about activities that were going on behind there. So that's why we did it. The only parking access that that leads to is around the back of the building, and it's for this building. I don't believe that it's for the other residents that are nearby. It's it's solely for us. There is another way out from behind the building that that goes out that I read when I read item number 19, it suggested that it's one way. My client is not familiar with that. They tell me that people have been using that as a two-way for quite some time. So I'd be interested to know where they got up with that. But the bottom line here is, this is all my client's parking, or excuse me, the the owner of this real estate's parking. It's not for abutting residences.
So I guess.
If it's preferred that we keep the gate open, I I think we can do that. It's not what the abutting residents want, but.
Right.
We're happy to work with you on it.
Yeah, no. Little Mr. Piscatelli there, would that affect your your building in any way? Or I'm just.
So so where that gate is, where that access road is, nobody uses that. The only reason I actually talked to him when he was cleaning it up, because one of the one of the tenants are squared who owns the mill in the back. So it it is an access road potentially for his use, but he would need to fix the road in order to do it. He cut down a bunch of trees and threw them in there because there's there was kids cutting through. It's a shortcut to some school, and there was a lot of vandalism. So they they cut trees and they threw them in there. They made it so you couldn't pass it. Standish cleaned it all up. Martin Eddie's cleaned it all up. And I told him, I said, now that you did that, there's gonna be these kids coming through, and they're breaking windows. They're breaking into cars. And and I said, it kind of went away when they they stopped using it as a cut through. So nobody uses that access road. All of the traffic comes in off of Lawrence Street. We share my building and Martin Eddie's share that access road. You can see where their parking lot is. There's a dark line. That's actually just a chain link fence. And I have nine parking spots on my on the access road side of the fence. Then there's the access road, and then I have 21 spaces spaces that are perpendicular to my building.
Okay.
And and the other thing is, he they're they're doing this construction on the third and fourth floor, based on the way the land slopes. His third and fourth, you walk in off this parking lot right into the third floor of his property. So then I have four floors off of this level. So when his exhaust is coming out, I have two floors that, if the wind's blowing, are gonna be catching all of it. And that's that's a really big concern.
Okay. So but as far as the so this this parking here, so the comment for the proposed site plan, the applicant is proposing to gate off and discontinue an existing right-of-way. That actually works out better, right?
That gate is where that cursor is now, and and but nobody drives up and down that. It's it's really not even drivable. It'd ruin your car if you went down there.
All right. So I think all parties would prefer to have it gated off as being proposed. Okay. No, I just wanted to thank you. I wanted to understand that. And while this is up, can you go over, please, the landscaping that you're proposing? Because and I know DPD, again, in the memo, item number 17, and if you go to section 6.19, 6.1.9, on the city's zoning ordinance, it does address the the use of shade trees when you have a certain amount of rooftop area to try to kind of soften the effect. And it's very interesting. You know, we got an interesting situation here. We always run there. We run into this. The chairman can tell you this in all the years he's served since the 1980s on the board. Whenever you have conflicting uses, when we have industrial zone, and then you go right into residential use, you know, we're trying and and we try to do is we try to balance, you know, because industrial zoning is precious in the city. There's not a lot of it. And who would have thought that, you know, the the main it seems like the main manufacturing in these industrial zones are marijuana cultivation facilities. But it's kind of interesting as times have evolved. But so we're just trying to obviously balance the fact that, you know, we're surrounded by residential. And to Mr. Piscatelli's point, I remember when that project came before us, he invested an awful lot into that building. Your client's investing an awful lot into this building. So we're just, I I obviously, there's a reason for this in the city zoning ordinance, and the idea is to try to soften the the effect of of having all that asphalt. So if you can go over what you're proposing, and perhaps maybe not, you know, it's not a new building, it's not a new parking lot, but perhaps we could we could fit some shade trees in here that would actually, if they're strategically located, would not create a a place for, you know, potential hit on the building, but, you know, as as you may have implied, but, you know, really kind of soften it and kind of give it a better look. That that's really what we're trying to achieve here.
Let me if if Randy Myron can can maybe explain a little bit about the landscape we're proposing. Randy, can you hop on?
I can, yeah. So can everybody hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Yeah, I mean, yep. Essentially, like we just discussed, it's, you know, we're adding some landscaping to help kind of soften it, to make it aesthetically look a little bit more pleasing. And and really, it's 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 a mixture of deciduous and of evergreen shrubs. I think there's some there's some dogwoods, some hollies. I think there's also some ornamental grasses kind of mixed in along the front of the building and along the head, you know, along the, I guess, the the ends of those parking spaces, you know. And in addition to that, we're also proposing to kind of clean up some of the existing overgrown landscaping out near Lawrence Street. Again, just to kind of prune it, clean it up a little bit, make it aesthetically a little bit a little a little bit nicer than what it looks today.
And and for everybody watching, can you orient on this here where Lawrence Street is, please?
Yeah, so it'd be in the, I guess, bottom right-hand corner. Yep, kind of where the cursor is there.
Okay.
If it's a matter of, you know, wanting some shade trees, I I think we could go back. I think, you know, we're gonna need to make a few revisions to the site plan anyway. And if you'd like us to include some shade trees, I think we can try to do that.
I I really would like, I mean, I let you work with DPD on the positioning of them of them, you know, and I wouldn't hold it to the to the strict number of nine. But I mean, I I just think that in 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 it really, you know, I appreciate the softening effect of what you're offering here, but there 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 could be an additional value to having some some actually some some full-size trees that are placed in key areas. You don't have to have the nine, but in some key locations, as if as 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 from the other building, when you look at it, as you can see from the approach from Lawrence Street, you know, just something that would add to soften that a little bit.
Sure.
All right. And then on the odor mitigation, and obviously, that's another key key area. And, you know, we've run into that in the in the past, and actually, one of the earlier facilities that were, you know, they were they were actually approved before they were required to come before the the planning board, before we actually had the the ordinance on the books. And you know, they were doing update to the to the facility coming before us for site plan, and we pulled up, and you could smell the cannabis. And and apparently, in talking to some of the residents around, they had been an issue for quite some time. And admittedly, they hadn't kept up with the technology. So to your point, the technology does has come a long way. I do know that's been an improvement even at that facility. But in in looking at your plan, I guess I had a question, because you detail a odor mitigation plan and also a a plan in place to deal with any complaints. However, and it says, you know, within two hours, you would consider that a a real-time response. And that way, they know what the weather conditions are. But how would how would somebody, the residents, if they're smelling an odor, what's the do they call the city of Lowell? Do they call and then they in turn would call who, you know, I or what's the I saw that in your plan, but it wasn't clear as to how that gets to gets to your logbook in real time?
So we we intend to make sure that any of the abutters have access to contact people. What we generally do is we try to set up meetings a month before, and then again, two weeks before we open, just to hear what the concerns are, discuss mitigation, and provide information like, here's the contact person if you have a problem. So we'll be scheduling those meetings, you know, just before we open, so that all the abutters know when there's a problem, this is who you contact. We'll make, you know, we'll make that very clear to them. I I would also suggest, as I mentioned before, my client will probably kill me for this, but the Martin Eddie's are right there. If you're having a problem, their their business is right next door. You should feel free to go and and let them know. They they understand their obligations in terms of odor.
I would hopefully, I wish the the head of the neighborhood group was here. I did that for almost 10 years in the city Lowell. I headed up a neighborhood group. They should really be facilitating helping facilitate that with you. But there there really needs to be a concerted effort to make sure that the neighbors have the the contact information. Problem is, is that then when you have neighbors come and go and leave, they may not have it. But because otherwise, it won't be in real time. It'll be a complaint to the city hall. And, you know, they've got a lot on their plate. I don't know when you get it. And then it comes back, what were the weather conditions? But with a, you know, nobody's gonna get an answer, to be honest with you.
If if you want to make a condition that we hold a a meeting, that we send notice out to all the abutters at least 30 days prior to opening, you know, that that would seem to me to be the best time to provide the information to our neighbors about who to contact and what happened.
Sure. Yeah, that would be I think that would be extremely helpful.
Sure.
I appreciate the process that was in place, but to me, there was kind of a, at least it appeared to be a disconnect there as far how do you get there, especially when you talk about real-time response?
Yep.
And I think. And you did provide the security plan. And again, not all aspects of the plan are released at a at a public meeting like this, because it defeats the purpose of of some of the security. So we do have a letter from Mark LeBlanc, Deputy Superintendent Operating Services Bureau, regarding the reviewing the the security plan. So the city of Lowell Police Department was was okay with that. Be with me just a moment here.
Yeah.
And then you did say you would provide the updated site plan with the parking dimensions, right?
Yep.
Which would be the perfect time to incorporate some shade trees in there as well.
Yep.
Facility. And and if you could please, I know you're looking for a waiver of the transportation management plan, and I can see that that, again, we've run into that. This is not a retail operation, 10 to 15 employees. It's I I can understand why you're you're asking for that. I do have a question, though. Is your your hours of delivery, normal business hours, or what are your normal business hours?
So I this would normally be expected to be something along the lines of nine to six. For security reasons, we wouldn't necessarily specify when those deliveries.
Understood.
Tends tends to be at random times.
More more sense of range here. Yep.
It be any any of the times that we're open.
During the normal business hours.
Yep.
All right. Atlantis, some snow area. Could you just please confirm the location of your snow storage?
Yeah. Is Ben on? Because Ben might know where that occurs. Ben or Paul?
Yep, can you guys hear me?
We can.
Yes.
And. I'm here with, how you guys doing? I'm I'm here with Ben. He manages the building. And Ben, you want to just explain with what you've been doing with the snow for the snow removal?
Yeah. If you're facing the building, basically, we push the the snow to the right upper corner in the parking lot, up against the fence. And I we I'm the one who actually plows it. We pile it up, and there's more than enough room. It might take up two, maybe three, maybe even up to four parking spaces, the way I push it and pile it. And then I also push some to the left side of the building. If you're facing the building against the fence, that that actual the the path is on, that the the gate is on. I don't block the gate, but I do push it up up against that fence. And that takes that takes up no parking spaces. So again, all in all, after I plow, we're not really losing much parking, maybe about four spaces.
Okay. Now, is the is what is the occupancy of the mill at this point? You have additional space you're looking to occupy or expand to or have additional tenants?
Yeah, we have some light industrial tenants on the first and second floor. We have a few tenants currently on the third floor, but nobody no leases, just all tenant at will on the third floor.
Okay.
So, I mean, the second floors, first and second are pretty much full right now. I think maybe we have, what, one or two spots open?
Yeah.
And the third floor is maybe half full. But, you know, when I
And your parking capacity with this facility and where the snow storage is by losing four spots, is that going to be, I mean, do you have that capacity to, with your adding 10 to 15 more employees?
Yeah, I mean, that upper lot that's gonna basically be used for the third and fourth floor, I think currently, as Phil stated previously, I think we have 42 spots there. If we're, if we have to increase the size of, of them, I, I think we may lose a couple spots, but, I mean, we're still probably in the high 30s, and if we lose a few because of the snow storage, I think we're still well over that 25-spot requirement.
Could I add something real quick? If, we haven't had to do it since we own the building, but if the, the snow were ever to pile up to the point where it was taking up a lot of parking spaces and whatnot, we have the machinery to remove snow from the lot and bring it somewhere else, so.
Yeah, and we, I appreciate you offering that, because we've actually made that as a condition in the past, sometimes when, just, you know, obviously, it's gotta, you're gonna, it's a, it's a on-the-spot call during a snowstorm, and, but we've certainly made that a condition in the past as well, so. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Vichette. Any other board members have any comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman, the only comment I have is similar to Mr. Vichette, is that a whole sea of asphalt for parking needs to have some shade trees there.
Understood. Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Anybody else on the board? Caleb?
Yes, Tom. So, have we addressed stormwater? I, I, I don't hear Mr. Vichette.
I think the applicant said he was willing to work with stormwater.
Make it a condition. Yeah, he's willing to make it a condition that was listed on the memo.
Okay. I think, yeah, Mr. Silverman mentioned that to begin with it, didn't you, sir? I hope I didn't miss, misspeak.
No, you're correct. It's, we, we know we have to get an approval from your, your stormwater review team.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So, I will think that if the stormwater team have any comment to work, work to get, you know, I, I think there might be some synergy with the landscaping, if there are certain requirements from the stormwater team. So, so probably the applicant can work with them and look at that together. And also, just a, just a note, a question about the gate. I think the last time I drove up from behind the mill and then I go up the slope, is that the gate that we're talking about? Like, there is a very narrow driveway that is pretty steep, but you can still drive on it.
I, I believe, yeah, over to the left here or my cursor.
Got it. So I maybe would drive through, so the gate was, wasn't closed, so I just want to, like, you know, make sure that it is, if it is supposed to be locked, then it, it should be maintained. So, maybe you guys are doing some projects there.
Okay.
Understood.
And that's all I have, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. I just have a couple of questions. One, I had, what do you currently have for trash removal, and how will it be impacted, or what you, what will you do once you're up and running? Will there be dumpsters on site for the people who are presently there, as well as your own materials? Or do your own materials get taken off-site, or how does that work?
Just so, let me make a diff, I'm gonna ask my client to explain sort of the current state.
Sure.
There's a distinction here, you know, anything that contains marijuana, we have to handle, and that can't be done through a dumpster. You have to render it unusable, you have, you know, there's a lot of protocols, bring it off-site to, you know, you can compost it, or you can bring it off-site to a state-approved location where it's, it's destroyed, or the non-marijuana paper box.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, that sort of thing. Ben, you want to explain where, where, how we deal with that right now?
There's currently two other dumpsters on-site, one in the upper lot and one on the side for the second floor tenants, so.
So, so those are just gonna be used for the common people who are on-site, or anybody else, but as indicated by Mr. Silverman, that the marijuana one, I know, has to be taken off-site completely different by the standards by the Cannabis Control Commission.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's gonna be a whole different, yep, that's gonna be a whole different, different scenario with the, with that removal for the, for the marijuana compared to what we have there now. We understand that.
Okay, I get that. And then I noticed, Mr. Silverman indicated that you have the marijuana tested, and I know the marijuana gets tested. Does that happen on-site, I take it? Because you don't take it off to have it tested, or how does that work?
No, you take it off-site, you take samples off-site to an independent lab that tests it, and you, you get your results, and hopefully, there aren't any issues, and you go forward from there. But it's.
They do a percentage, I take it, or whatever?
Yeah, so, yeah, it's, it's very complicated, but there's a certain number of batches that you have to get tested every time you, you have a harvest, so.
Yeah, we had one applicant come before us who wanted to set up a test site in the city, but he didn't find the exact location that he wanted, but, so we got a little bit of education about how they test all of that, and not just marijuana and other matters. I know, as everybody's talked about, and I know that odor control is always from the Cannabis Control Commission, and I always call it, you gotta pass the smell test, that's my basic terminology on it. And so, what we've tried to do here in the past, and trying to be consistent, is we make it a condition that would satisfactory to the city of Lowell as well. So therefore, if there's a problem with the odor, you know, needn't just say, well, call the Cannabis Control Commission. If we make it a condition on a site plan, then the city of Lowell has, has a little more teeth into controlling what goes on, on the site, because it's part of the condition of the site plan. So usually, what we would do is ask that, you know, obviously, that the odor control be completed within the standards of the Cannabis Control Commission, as well as there's the satisfactory to the city of Lowell plant, planning and development department, as well as the Board of Health. So therefore, if they have smells in the neighborhood, they could also call the local people at the planning department, downtown city hall, as well as the cannabis control. So therefore, and it's usually not an extra burden for the applicants, because most of them say they believe the Cannabis Control Commission's gonna cover it all, so we just do it as an extra security measure after we had that one problem that, when it came out in the past. And it was what you said, Mr. Silverman, is, you know, they went and noticed that their filters hadn't been changed regularly. They didn't have a yearly inspection on-site. So, once we went and visited the site, myself and Mr. Vichette, separate times, I smelled this, as I stepped out of the car, and Mr. Vichette was smelling, coming through his air conditioner. I told him, lucky he didn't get pulled over. So, and so then after that, they said, okay, now we're gonna do a schedule, like you proposed here. They went and changed all the filters, and, because this was the first one there in the city, and we had no say in the matter, they just got the building permit, went ahead, and they just let all this stuff go, and nobody did any maintenance to it per se. So obviously, with the maintenance plan, it helps control that odor control, and obviously, I'd like to see the condition, if this matter gets approved, that it, the odor control is satisfactory to the cannabis commission, as well as the city of Lowell. I don't think you have any problems with that, I hope, because of the fact that I think if the cannabis control matter works, then others just secondary in nature, but it gives us a little security blanket to keep the smoke down, and, you know, so.
We understand.
Yeah, I mean, you know, so not send up any smoke signals, you know? Let's see, Mr. Vichette, Mr. Vichette covered most, everything else on the planning staff comments. Yeah, I think he did a good job of covering everything, so I have nothing further to add. Any other board members have any further comments, or anything else that's been alluded to by myself, or other board members? Anybody else?
Chairman?
Caleb? Yeah.
One of the staff comment, commented about the facade of the building, so I want to ask to the applicant whether you can clarify whether there will be any exterior work, like, regarding maybe some of the windows that might, that are broken or boarded up.
Paul, you want to respond to that?
I mean, look, we, we have a, we have an interest in the neighborhood. We've owned a building and, and a business behind this particular building for 20-plus years. We have an interest in the condominium building at 34 New Hall Street, so, I mean, we, we want to make the neighborhood look good, we want to improve the neighborhood, so, I mean, we do want to make the building look, you know, presentable and, and improve the condition of the building. So, yeah, we're willing to, to look at everything and see what needs to be done. So, you know, I guess, I mean, some of the, the windows are boarded up, but I, I think when we stop production, Phil, correct me if I'm wrong, some of the windows, that whole floor's gonna be boarded up anyways, isn't it, or blacked out, so.
Yeah, I mean, we, we can certainly make sure that it is something that it's, that's not unattractive, you know, that there aren't broken windows, and that, whatever, you know, that we can maintain the facade in a way that doesn't have a negative appearance.
Absolutely, yep. And I think when you have broken windows, it tends to, to have kids, make some more broken windows.
Yep.
That, that's at least what I witnessed growing up in the parts of the city that I grew up in Lowell. I mean, kids saw a broken window, they throw another rock at it, and then they're like, hey, I didn't break anything, it was already broken, but.
Mr. Chairman, you talk to any police officer, you talk to any police officer, they'll call it the broken window syndrome, and that's what deteriorates the neighborhood.
Yep. Once, once that's, they go, yep, yep. Anything further, Caleb, on that, or?
No, I'm satisfied, thank you.
Okay, any other board members, any comments, huh? So all, so this is just a request for a site plan, so we just need one vote on the matter?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan with the following conditions. The applicant shall provide an updated site plan to DPD with a dimensionally compliant parking area, including compliant parking space sizes setbacks in drivelanes. The applicant shall obtain approval from the city of Lowell Stormwater Review Team prior to applying for building permit. The applicant will work with DPD staff to add shade trees in the parking lot associated with the subject property. And I would add, just in, in a, in a manner to soften the, the overall appearance of the, the large paved parking area. The applicant shall notify and conduct a neighborhood meeting to all abutters as defined by notification requirement for public hearing approximately 30 days prior to the operation, the operation going online, to provide contact information for odor mitigation concerns of the neighborhood. And really, I think that would be an opportunity to address any other possible concerns that we have. If required, the applicant should remove any snow from the parking lot in order to maintain adequate parking for the facility. And the applicant must meet, maintain state and city odor mitigation controls. And I would just add, the applicant will work to address the broken windows on the facade of the building to soften, or shall I say, to, how do I want to phrase that? To, to, to make the facade of the building more aesthetically pleasing to the, the, to the inhabitants and to the, to the surrounding neighborhood.
Dylan, you have all those conditions that you have set out for, for staff? You have any questions on that?
Yes.
Okay. If you do it anytime, Dylan, just let us know, okay?
Okay.
Okay. So we do have a motion by Mr. Vichette on the floor? Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Second by Mr. Malovich. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Any opposition? Hearing none, that motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, may I just, may I just add, Mr. Chairman to Mr. Silverman? Well, usually, the condition of working with DPD is if they're, if you're at an impasse and DPD would like to see maybe the trees a certain way, and you're refusing to do so, what that constitutes is they come back to the planning board, so that we can resolve that issue, just to understand that.
Understood. Yep.
Thank you.
Not a problem.
Thank you, sir. So the motion's been approved. Good luck, we wish you well with your building.
Great.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so let me say, moving along on the agenda, by any chance, do we have the applicant here for Merrimack Street for the extension request?
Yes.
They, they present with us?
He, he is, he's walking up. Yes.
No. If, if the board doesn't mind, I'd like to take that, that matter out of order and do the extension request?
Mr. Chairman, just, I, I will be recusing myself on that matter.
Okay. So we have an extension request for 725, 741, and 749 Merrimack Street. The applicant for the above-listed address has requested a two-year extension on the special permit approval first granted to, to convert the vacant church into 50 residential units. May we hear from the applicant?
Yes, Attorney Harrington with the applicant, and I have with me Brian McGowan here from Merrimack Street Real Estate Development Corp. You know, we've been before, before requesting these extensions, he's to the point now where he's ready to go, he has all his construction plans completed. There's been a little holdup, you know, I know it's probably been in the newspaper, that there's maybe some interest, some outside interest in the property for a potential museum. We're kind of sitting back a little to see if that materializes, but otherwise, he's ready to move forward with his, you know, with his construction if that doesn't proceed. So, at this point, we's pretty confident that within this next extension period, things are gonna move forward, so.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor. Any of the board members have any questions? Any questions by anybody?
Chairman, how, how many members do we have? Do we, do we have a quorum?
Yes. We need, also, we need, we need three to vote. If Mr. Vichette's not gonna vote, we need five. I mean, five's a quorum, and what we need is three, majority three out of the five. I'm in favor of the extension, I voted for this back when he came before us, he did a good layout, and I know with a lot of economic times and COVID and everything else, a lot of things have got set back pretty far, so I'm in favor definitely of the request, and if any of the board members have no objection, I'd make a motion that we extend the request. I believe it was for a two-year extension. Counsel, do we need a date on that two-year, or Dylan? Do you need that in my motion?
It would have been from, ooh.
That's what I mean.
February, I know that, yeah.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that we give you the right time and don't cut you short, Counsel, that's all.
Yeah. Yeah, I, you know, if we went from February, I know it's in February, so even if it was from February 1st, that would be sufficient, so.
So what do you need, February, I thought you need February 1, 24?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we extend, give the two-year extension to February 1st of 2024.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Malovich. All in favor, say aye.
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 Mr. Vichette's not voting, anybody in opposition? Hearing none, the motion carries, three in favor and one abstained. Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, we appreciate taking us out of order. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Okay, moving along on the agenda, the next matter is, let's see. The next matter is, let's see, we have a public shade tree hearing, 939 Lorren Street and 1050 Gorham Street. In accordance with Mass. Jamalas Chapter 87.5 and Chapter 260, the planning, the Lowell Code of Ordinance, the Lowell Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons regarding the proposed removal of 17 public shade trees located at 1050 Gorham Street and 939.1 Lorren Street. These trees are less than 24 inches in diameter, and six of the trees are dead. New England Power Company is proposing that the trees be removed so that they can access their transmission lines to replace existing overhead transmission shield wire lines and replace or modify existing transmission line structures. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Joshua Lee Smith. I'd like to first do a sound check to make sure that everyone can hear me okay.
Yep. I can, anybody else?
Great, excellent. So, Mr. Chair, members of the board, I'm here this evening representing my client, New England Power Company, in connection with this request for an approval of our tree removal permit submitted to the board. The board this evening is serving as the tree board in accordance with the city's local tree ordinance. As you had mentioned, Mr. Chair, this project, the project that is contemplated includes certain upgrades to two existing transmission lines. These are 115 KV transmission lines known as the J162 and J162A lines. There's certain work that needs to be included in connection with this upgrades, including the replacement of shield wire with what's called optical ground wire. In addition to that, there's some other work that needs to be performed with respect to the installation of certain related equipment and the replacement of certain structures. In order to perform all of this work, the company needs to be able to access the infrastructure, access the transmission line right of way, transmission line corridor. There are a couple of tracts of land within this city which are city-owned parcels, and that is where the jurisdiction for this tree removal permit comes into play. The local tree ordinance provides that any removal of a tree on city-owned land requires approval by the tree board, in this case, the tree, the planning board. So as you had mentioned, Mr. Chair, what the company is proposing to do is to, in order to access its infrastructure to perform this work on these transmission lines, it needs to remove a total of 17 trees, up to 17 trees, on these two tracts of land. One of the parcels of land proposes the removal of three trees. The other tract of land proposes the removal of the balance of the trees, 14 trees. And as you had mentioned, Mr. Chair, and as what was stated in the advertisement that was published in the newspaper, six of the 17 trees are actually dead. So I do want to indicate, or let the board know that the company has met with the tree warden, Commissioner Christine Clancy, on-site, so that she could see herself sort of the nature and scope of the area, as well as the trees to be removed. We submitted, as part of our application, a tree inventory which provides actual pictures marking the trees to be removed, as well as a map that shows the locations of where these trees are to be removed. In addition to that, we've also provided on the tree map locations where the company anticipates that it will be able to replant certain trees as well. So with all that being said, I promise to be brief, and I know the board has a long evening tonight, so that's pretty much all there is to it. The company is looking to remove these trees in order to be able to access its infrastructure and equipment to be able to perform this work. And of course, the work that's contemplated is in furtherance of maintaining the electric reliability for the city. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board and the public may have, and I do want to mention that I can see that there are a number of project team members as well, so there are a number of New England Power Company representatives that are in attendance as well, if there are any questions that I cannot answer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody here this evening want to speak in favor of the shade tree, I mean, the public shade tree removal? In favor, in favor? Hearing none, anybody in opposition? Anybody in opposition? In opposition, in opposition? Hearing none, at this time, I'll turn the matter over to the board members. Any of the board members have any questions?
I know we had plenty of information submitted to us in our packet, and I believe a lot of it was given to, excuse me, attention to Christine Clancy as well. And I think we got some pretty good pictures here of all the trees that they're talking about, as well as, they're all numbered in our packet here, as well as, I know myself and other board members have been out to the site to look at them as well, and they gave us a pretty good detail of the map, so it's pretty easy to find them. Yeah, and, yeah, it was a nice letter that you wrote, Mr. Smith.
So at that point, I'll turn it over, any board members have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, may I just, I think we also received some correspondence, right, from an abutter?
Yes, we did.
Right?
I think if I have, they have that with you, Jerry, I'm looking through my piles.
I do, yeah.
Whether it's whose property it was or something, I believe, I remember.
Well, I think, I think from some prior work too, there were some dead trees left there, and I think was concerned about any work that's done, you know, it, first of all, it could be, like, I read this, it said, want me to read this, Mr. Chairman, it really?
Yes, if you would, Jerry, please, thank you. I'm looking through my piles right now.
Yeah, it says, "My name is David Fiorello and the owner of property located at 1040, 1044 Gorham Street since 1999. I showed to the February 7th hearing as an abutter at 1050 Gorham Street slated for tree removal for a couple of reasons. Since I will not be able to attend the rescheduled meeting, I am hoping my concern can be passed on. First, I am glad something is being done about the entire conditions of the abandoned city property, which has been an eyesore and dumping site of trash for many years now. I have personally cleaned property many times over the years. There have been many branches falling in my pocket over the years, luckily with minimal property damage. What I am hoping for is take down all dead trees, dead dying trees, brush located at 1050 Gorham Street. The more, the better. Remove from sight the fallen branches and dead trees from the property, including what is already on the ground. Huge eyesore and hazard. While doing tree work removal on my property, 1040, 1044 Gorham Street, all the cut-down branches and brush that the utility company cut on my property were doing their seasonal clearing and left behind mostly located near the train tracks and were unkind enough to leave there. Also, remove the branches that fell from 1050 Gorham Street on my property. I was hugely disappointed, but I didn't catch it until too late when I was doing my yard cleanup to clean. Can you supply contact info for the persons responsible for the job in case we need to make arrangements, in case of parking arrangements on my property for upcoming work?"
So I think, and again, I don't know, Ms. Clancy, I guess, we're kind of, with the line, but I'm a little confused with where the line falls from its city property and the power company's doing some work, and there's something we can do in with the power company, perhaps they can offer some assistance here to remove some of the trees that, some of the past cuttings that were down, and then how would that get monitored as that takes place?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I can, I'd be happy to
Please, sir, if you could.
Respond. So thank you for raising this. We, the company did also receive correspondence from Mr. Fiorello, and fortunately, the last meeting was postponed, so there was time in advance of this meeting for the company to actually go on-site and meet with Mr. Fiorello, which they did. So the company had a very cordial meeting with Mr. Fiorello, and first and foremost, I want to indicate that the, his comment regarding the parking on his property, we did confirm, and I will confirm to the board, that there is no parking that would be required for the company on his property in connection with this work or any work. I want to make that clear. Number two, in, at the meeting that was, that took place at the property, it was confirmed that the wood pieces that were left behind were, in fact, railroad ties that were, that are presumably owned by the MBTA. For those who are familiar with the area, Mr. Fiorello's property, behind his property is MBTA land, and so there's, as part of the, both the transmission line right of way, as well as the railroad right of way there, it was determined that it's, in fact, MBTA debris that was left there. The representatives that met with Mr. Fiorello had indicated that they would be happy to provide a contact, and that may have already happened, in fact, of the railroad company, so that he can reach out to them to correspond, like, to these old railroad ties. And in terms of other trees that are, that may be dead or dying, I think it would have to be determined as to where those trees are in terms of whether it's on his property, MBTA property, or the city's property. And again, as a reminder, we are here before you this evening because the trees that are proposed to be removed, the 17 trees that are jurisdictional, that are proposed to be removed, no, for the company to be able to access its transmission lines, we're only here this evening because it happens to be on city-owned land. The company doesn't own these trees, it has a right to be able to use the land for access, it can't do anything with any other trees on the city's property. So I was not able to meet with Ms. Fiorello regarding this, I think the company would be happy to meet with him again, if they'd like to discuss certain other tree removal, but this is, again, these are not trees that the company owns, that they maintain, it's, this land is merely just for access, so that the company can access its transmission line.
No, and I appreciate that, I'm delighted to hear, at least you did schedule a meeting with Mr. Fiorello, so that's, that was, I appreciate that. Actually, is Ms. Clancy available to come to the microphone? Is she, I believe she was at City Hall?
Yes, good evening. As far as, I do suggest meeting with the property owner again, to go over the trees in question, because that likely is, if it is on city property, we have to determine that, and I think it's a matter that could be handled outside of this, this matter.
Okay, so if we could do that, I mean, obviously, I walked the site, I mean, it's all in how you view all of that, I mean, it provides a buffer, but some of it's pretty rough, but it's nice to have the privacy too. But I also, geez, that gazebo that's back there too, that looks like it's rotting and the floors are out, I was a little disappointed as I walked around through there, I don't even know what, how that's maintained at this point, but, yeah, no, that's, that's fine, and I'm assuming that obviously the, then you will be working with the tree warden, with Ms. Clancy for planting additional replacement trees, is that correct?
That's correct, yes. And I do want to underscore, if I didn't mention before to the members, that the trees here that are contemplated, as you could probably tell from the photographs, are all very small. None of them are, none of them meet that 24-inch threshold, so any replacement trees, it would be a one-for-one replacement, and the company, of course, is happy to do that, to the extent that they can, on the area of land that they're able to. If there are any trees that cannot be replaced among the 17, or, you know, subject to the tree warden's discretion, if, depending on how she wants to treat the six dead trees, then a contribution can be made to the town's tree replacement fund.
I was surprised when I walked the site how small some of those trees were, I was actually surprised. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome, Mr. Bichette. Bob, any questions?
No, not really. I think we ought to move a rule on this matter.
Okay, Caleb?
No, Chairman, I'm satisfied with the plan.
Okay. I have no comments, I think Mr. Smith did a good job, obviously, hearing from Ms. Clancy is always very, very helpful to help make our decisions, so I have no problem with the matter. Let's see, so. I'll make a motion that we approve the I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I'm not sure how it's, because it's a public hearing, do you have to close the, move to close the public hearing? Do you do that with?
Once I let anybody speak, and then basically, I let everybody speak, and if anybody wants to speak again, they may, and then after I hear from all the board members, then we just, we don't technically come out and close it, because a lot of times, once I start talking, people jump in on me.
Okay.
So basically, yeah, we go right to the motion, so, because sometimes, a lot of times, we get interrupted during our motions. Some attorneys are a little more zealous than others, don't let us finish saying what we have, so basically, yeah, so we don't close it yet, in case if anything I say, anybody else wants to add something to it, but going back, I will make a motion that we approve the request for the removal of the 17 public shade trees with the understanding that they either be relocated, or best on-site, if not somewhere else, or if not, that a donation will be made to the shade tree fund for the city wall.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so a motion is made, and second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, that motion's allowed, four in favor, none against. Good luck, thank you very much, sir, thank you, Ms. Clancy, appreciate your help, like always.
Thank you, everyone, thank you. Thank you, Christine.
Thank you, sir, good job. Okay, moving along. Next matter on the agenda, definitive subdivision, 339-341 Lincoln Street. Lil P Real Estate LLC has applied for the approval of a definitive subdivision plan that includes a subdivision of the existing parcel into two parcels that do not meet the minimum frontage requirements pursuant to Section 5.1 of the Lowell zoning ordinance. The property is located in traditional neighborhood, two-family zoning district. The project requires planning board approval under Lowell Subdivision of Land Regulations. May we hear from the applicant, please? Yes.
All right.
The subdivision Lincoln Street?
Yes, Chairman Lenihan.
Oh, yeah, okay, Mr. Cox, okay, Trinity Cox, go ahead, please.
Okay, sorry, a little technical difficulty. Chairman Lenihan, members of the planning board, my name's Attorney John Cox, 375 Gorham Street, Lowell, Massachusetts. I represent John Lo Priore of Lil P Real Estate LLC, who is the applicant for this approval of this definitive subdivision plan. Currently, 339 Lincoln Street is a fully occupied three-story residence, and 341 Lincoln Street is a four-bay garage used mostly for storage. Back in September 27th, we went before the Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals and were granted various variances to bring 339 Lincoln Street into conformance and to allow Mr. Lo Priore to demolish the existing four-bay garage at 341 Lincoln and build a small, single-family home. The variances were granted unanimously, and, but due to the fact that neither lot has sufficient frontage, this approval is required. Should be noted that there was no opposition, neighborhood or otherwise, at the ZBA, and that on August 31st, the DPD, the staff from DPD and the memo, supported this, supported the variance. February 18th of this year, DPD staff has put together another memo, which I'm sure you have before you, which supports this proposal as well. Obviously, if the applicant, if the application's approved... Obviously, if the applicant, if the application is approved, the applicant will complete all, all work within the period required by the board. He'll complete all work within two years from the date of final approval. He will not sell the property until the plan is recorded, and he will follow and obey any and all other regulations promulgated by the City of Lowell. So we, we also have with us Giovanni Fadera from Fadera Engineering, who did all the engineering work on this. I believe Mr. Lo Priore is at City Hall this evening, I guess I saw him earlier, but we're happy to answer any questions, and we hope that the board will see fit to, to grant this approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Cox. So at this point in time, I take it that completes the case for the applicant this time, so I can open it up to the public at this time? Is that correct, Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, at this point in time, anybody like to speak in favor of this project? In favor? In favor, in favor? Hearing none, anybody in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none? I'll turn it over to the board members. Any of the board members have any questions or concerns?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just comment that, the, what is being proposed here is really in character with the, with the neighborhood. I've actually took pictures of the homes across the street, pretty much in line with the frontage that is within the neighborhood, and currently, there's, I believe, a four-stall garage that's on that site that, so it really is, there's already a large structure on there that's going to come down, and the placement of, of the home in the condition placed forth by the Zoning Board of Appeals and the lawn area that's being proposed, I think is actually an improvement to that corner, so I'm sure it would be in favor as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shetland. Bob, any questions?
No, I have no problems with this proposal at all.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Phil.
Caleb?
I have a question regarding parking, what's the proposed parking arrangement? Are, are there any new garages, or they will be on, on-street parking?
Well, currently, they will be on-street parking, they will be parking for the, for the home, the, the new single-family home. I believe there are two parking spots on the plan, and obviously, DPD has determined, I believe, that on-site, on-street parking in that area is, is sufficient. But yes, there will be two new parking spots with the single-family home, and it also should be noted that, that garage, although it's a four-bay garage, it is used only for storage, it is not used for anybody who lives there to park there, so I think this would be like an added plus-two anyways on the, on the parking.
I see. And, and so, just to clarify, so the three-family house will, will not have, is there are not no other plant, parking planned for, for that house?
That's correct, yes. It will stay the same as it is now, because the, the garage next door is not, is not, although it's a garage per se, it's, it's used for storage and not parking, so it would be a neutral on the, the three-family.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Caleb. So this is a little different when we see a request for a definitive subdivision, because usually we're talking about building a road, and here, the road's already existed. Right, counsel?
Correct.
And so usually, I mean, usually, when it comes before us, we, we'll see that, you know, you're going to develop the two houses, they're going to look at putting the road in, we're going to look at, you know, you know, the width of the street, the curving on the street, the curb cuts and all that, but.
Correct.
So this is all existing, I mean, so, okay, yeah, so it's not usually, you know, a typical definitive subdivision plan. Okay, I think the only thing the staff asked was on the plan is that you have to remove the approval-not-required stamp, because, I mean, I guess that was what your indication was at first, before you found out that, yeah, that you had to come through this subdivision?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's not a problem, so they'll have to come off before the recording, counsel?
It will come off, yes, and we'll also, we're going to, we will retitle the plan, definitive subdivision plan 339-341 Lincoln Street.
Okay, so that comes off, yeah, because, yeah, and because if you had the ANR, you wouldn't have to come before us, but the fact that.
Right.
It was picked up because it didn't have the frontage by staff that came before us. Okay, I get it, okay. All right, thank you, yeah, all right, thank you very much. I have no further comments. Any further comments from any of the board members? I think the staff basically has no concerns, just, like, the only one I saw was the ANR, which Attorney Cox said they'll take care of, and obviously, engineering, you know, if you have, there's no problem, they have to deal with whatever they want if they want, if you need any new vertical granite, if you have to do it by city standards, which I'm, and the sidewalks, by city standards, whatever has to be done. There's no objection with that, counsel? Okay?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Any of the board members have any further questions? If, if not, I'll make a motion to approve the, the definitive subdivision.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none? It's approved?
Thank you, gentlemen, and I would like to also thank Francesca and Dylan and everybody at DPD staff, they, they're very, very, as you know, very, very good to, to, to work with and very, very supportive and helpful, so I want to thank, thank them for that, too. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel, we appreciate that, and we appreciate all the hard work they do to make our meetings a lot better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night. Okay, moving along on the agenda, do we have any comments from any of the, for the board members, any notices or comment? Nothing over there, Jerry, you filled me in last time on the Rock Bridge when it was just you and I, so.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, okay, and.
I think it all hit the newspapers and everything after that, so.
Yeah, and Richard's in here to give us the historic update, we'll get that at the next meeting, so. So I think we're in, ready for a motion to adjourn.
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
No second.
I did.
Motion's made and second, all in favor, say aye. Chair votes you, we are adjourned tonight, and thank you very much, everybody, good meeting. Thank you.
Take care, everyone.
Yep, stay safe.
You too.
Stay safe, Bob.
I try.